Good evening, I'd like to welcome everyone to our Newton County Board of Education, July 24th. At this time, would you bow your heads please for a moment of silence? Thank you. Stand for the pledge.
Pledge, reasons to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and made visible with liberty and justice for all.
We have no special recognition, I understand we have some public participation at this time?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we do. Public participation is the time that the Board has set aside to encourage you as members of our community to voice your opinion on any matter either included on or excluded from the printed agenda. A maximum time of five minutes will be allotted to a single individual or a single topic based on the number of requests. Complaints against any employee of the school system will not be heard unless the complaint has been submitted in writing to the superintendent at least seven days prior to the board meeting. If unresolved, any personal complaints about school personnel must be put in writing for the Board to review in executive session. Personal attacks against any member of the Board would not be tolerated. Once the time for public participation has passed, discussion of topics will be restricted to Board members only. Thank you in advance for complying with this request. And we just have to read that aloud and see that the issue is about school tax. So we have a Mr. Alonso Bailey or Baileys? Mr. Baileys, if you'll come forward, we have a microphone right here that you can use. Good afternoon.
I'm still concerned about the school taxes and what it is. I don't have any children or kids at all. And why should I be paying almost $800 a year in school taxes? School means nothing to me. Why should I? I want answers. And I'm not getting any answers.
Okay, Mr. Bailey, I think, did he have a conference with Ms. Fury?
Yes, I did.
So her answers did not satisfy you?
No. Because I still got to pay school taxes.
Okay.
Now, why should I pay for something? Don't concern me. Just like you going to buy something and they charge you too much and go back and say, well, that's the way it is. Well, then you got to pay that, which is not fair. I don't have kids, ever had kids. My wife home now with scardosis and congestion heart failure with fluid around both of them. She been in the hospital for the reason I didn't come the last time because she's in the hospital. She's home now on a ice cream. And my concern is about her. But why should I be concerned about paying school taxes? I feel like school is taking advantage of me. And I'm not the only one, but I'm the only one speaking about it. You wouldn't like to just go there and take $800 and give it away? I'm quite sure. You've got five people who quit, six people up there, and no one would volunteer and give all the max, well, Mr. Bailey, we'll get together and give you $800. I don't think that's going to happen.
Mr. Bailey, I appreciate your concerns and I'm sorry for your illness and your family. But we'd be willing more than happy to sit down if we can discuss this further if you like.
Yes.
Because I think this is not a good time to go into great detail to try to explain to you why it's set up that way. Will that satisfy you?
Well, whatever you do, I got to go along with you.
Yes, sir.
That is not fair.
Yes, sir. Again, thank you for your concerns.
May I say something?
Sure.
Mr. Bailey, I know a lot of times people in my district, especially people who don't have kids, do share the same concern that you have. And oftentimes, I ask them a couple of questions. And you may not like it, you may understand, but I try to have that dialogue with them to help them understand. And so although you don't have kids, I oftentimes ask them, do they go to the local grocery store? Do they go to local restaurants? Do they shop locally? Do they go to the hospital? And nine times out of 10, somebody working in those areas is someone that has come through our school system. And so although, you know, they may not have a child, you want to make sure you're getting the right change back. You want to make sure that person have the great soft skills. You want to make sure that person that's working with you is educated. And so sometimes it's our responsibility, just as a citizen, to kind of go along with that. But also, I know the price when you're on a fixed income or anything like that, you have other things going on that's high.
Yeah, because I'm 74 years old. I shouldn't be paying anything at all.
And so I do know that a lot of times I tell them to go to the tax appraisal office. And I know something over at the tax appraisal, they'll usually work out with the seniors. Now, it doesn't benefit you if you plan on selling your home, but if you're settled where you are, it may be something that they can suggest you do that may decrease it a little.
I went there.
You did?
I went there and they decreased it a little, but school taxes, they have nothing, it's not their concern.
At the tax appraisal office?
That's right.
Okay.
Okay. So, Ms. Fury, if you don't mind, if you give her a call, then she'll try to, you know, go some more detail with you on it.
I think, if I might, if I may.
Sure, alright.
Mr. Bailey and I have met probably three or four times now. I've been out to Mr. Bailey's house to visit with him, to have conversation regarding taxes. And I think ultimately, we, I think Mr. Bailey completely understands the process. You correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Bailey, but he understands the process, he just does not like it or agree with it. And we've talked about, we have senior exemptions, they were put in place in 2007. We've talked about, I've looked at Mr. Bailey's tax documents and advised that he go to the tax assessor's office to challenge the appraisal, which he had already done and worked through that. It is, it is just the nature of the taxing. And so I don't think it's a lack of understanding, it's just the desire for us to exempt him and others from paying the taxes. And I've also worked with the tax assessor and got the evaluations and looked at the age levels to see what would it mean to the school district if we exempted people at certain age brackets? And you know, it's millions of dollars that we would no longer have access to. So, you know, Mr. Bailey and I have talked and talked on the phone, he's come by, I've been out there. And Mr. Bailey's a wonderful person. But I don't think anything that I say is going to change anything. Would you agree, Mr. Bailey?
No.
Yeah?
Because I still got to come out of my pocket with $800.
Right.
And it's not fair at all. I'm 74 years old, I shouldn't have to be paying those school taxes. I didn't complain because I was 34 years over the road, I worked, I paid. Now I'm retired, I think I have put enough into the school system not to have any kids, not to have to worry about it anymore. But nobody understands that. At least they act like they don't.
So at this point, Mr. Bailey, we appreciate you coming, sharing your concerns, and we will continue to look and talk with people, see if something can be done. But at this point, that's the rules.
Well, is the Board doing anything or talking to each other about making some kind of arrangement?
As Ms. Fury just mentioned, she's talked with the commissioners. And, but, you know, at this point, this is where we are.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Before moving on, I want to make a motion to amend the agenda before we approve.
Okay, go ahead.
So I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda. We add an item S for discussion of the superintendent's contract.
Okay, I have a motion to amend the agenda and adding item S for discussion of superintendent's contract extension. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bailey. Any questions or concerns? Having none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Now I need a motion to approve the agenda as written, adding item S.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Bailey. Second. Second by Mr. Johnson. Any questions or concerns? Having none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Same. Motion carries. Need a motion to approve the minutes, please.
So moved.
I have a motion to approve the minutes by Mr. Johnson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Coggins. Any questions or concerns? Having none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Superintendent's report.
Good evening. In the operations report, business and finance, a special purpose local option for education sales tax, East Plaist four distribution for May was $1,40,925, which is an increase of $21,942 from the previous month. The average for the first 40 months of East Plaist four collections is $938,149. The title Ed Valorm Tax Collection for May was $93,427. And finally, number three, business and finance, the process of closing out the fiscal year has begun. As part of this process, property tax collections for July and August are accrued, as well as payroll expenses for 10 and 11-month employees. The final ending fund balance will be available for your review at the October meeting. In facilities, just an update on projects as of June 30th, 2018. Painting at Al Covey High School and Rocky Plains Elementary School was 75 percent. Both those projects are now complete. The construction of security vestibules is on schedule and approximately 50 percent complete, again, that was as of June 30th. We anticipate all of that work being complete before the start of school. The installation of remote video access devices at all schools was 30 percent complete and is now approximately 75 percent complete. And finally, the construction of the softball field at Veterans Memorial Middle School was 50 percent complete as of June 30th. In pupil transportation, during the period of July 1, 2017, through June 30th, 2018, school buses traveled 2,893,999 miles. In June, the average cost for diesel fuel was $2.76. And finally, in school nutrition, the school nutrition department prepared and delivered free summer breakfast and/or lunch meals to 23 sites in Newton County in June and continued feeding at six community sites into the first week of July. In total, 16,250 lunch meals were served and 8,059 breakfast meals were served. And that time period was from June 4th and ended July 6th. The summer feeding sites included meals for all 21st Century Community Learning Centers, high school credit recovery programs, Mainstay Academy, as well as STEM camps. Children at the Newton County Community Locations were fed in partnership with Action Ministries who distributed free meals to the children at the sites. And, Mr. Chairman, that concludes the operations report.
Thank you. I need a motion to approve the item A as presented, please.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Johnson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Coggins. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Same. Motion carries. Item B. Good evening.
The CIT report. Elementary teachers from across the county participated in the summer academy that was held at Newton High School on June 12th and June 13th. We had 101 elementary teachers and 77 elementary paraprofessionals attending. There were over 60 different sessions covered with a variety of topics such as daily five support, teaching reading to upper grade students, math unit trainings, math fluency, science instruction, classroom management, supporting special education students in the regular classroom, and many more. The instructional technology department had its first cohort of DIN, which stands for Discovery Education Network ambassadors, to graduate. This team of educators, one for each school, participated in a year-long workshop to become digital age leaders. Intensive training and instruction was voluntary, and these educators completed all requirements and assignments to earn DIN ambassadorship. On June 21st, Georgia Council on Economics Education came to the Board Office to work with the group of 5th grade teachers on integrating economics into U.S. history. The teachers enjoyed the hands-on workshop and look forward to integrating the ideas in their classroom this fall. The secondary curriculum and instruction specialists began the curriculum mapping process, Pathway to Success, along with the ELA and math teams during the weeks of June 4th through 14th at the Career Academy. The first week of curriculum mapping was devoted to ELA and social studies, and the second week was devoted to math and science. The curriculum mapping team worked feverishly to create a roadmap of success for all teachers. The collaboration that took place was simply amazing and a true reflection of the dedication of everyone. And finally, five school nurses accompanied Carol Martin, who is the district's lead school nurse, to the Georgia Association of School Nursing Conference in Athens. Ms. Martin is a member of the Leadership Academy responsible for training new lead nurses. School nurses earn continuing education credits for licensing requirements. And that's just a highlight of the CIT, some of the highlights from the CIT report.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I need a motion to approve item B, please, as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Johnson, second by Ms. Coggins. Any questions or concerns? Having none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Same. Motion carries. We don't have any old business, new business. Item A, Ms. Robertson.
The superintendent recommends the adoption of the FY19 millage rates as follows. MNO millage rate, 20 mils, debt service millage rate zero, for a total millage rate of 20. The millage rate for MNO will remain the same and is more than the rollback millage rate of 18.513. The MNO millage rate may not exceed 20 mils by law. The debt service millage rate will remain at zero as we will be using East Plaist four funds to pay, to help pay the principal interest on our bonds. The total combined millage rate will be 20 mils.
Thank you. I need a motion to approve item A, please.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Johnson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Coggins. Any questions or concerns?
I'd just like to make a comment and.
Sure, Mr. Bailey, go ahead.
For everyone, but for Mr. Bailey, we are, we talked at great length, had three different hearings about the millage rate and being able to roll it back, and just came to a place where we weren't able to do that this year. But it is, it is a priority issue for us, was something we are discussing, and we do look forward to opportunity, hopefully, in the future to be able to move that rate back to where we were before, hopefully, but at least begin the process of lowering the millage rate and, but while still fully funding our schools and our students.
Any other discussion? Having none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Same. Motion carries. Item B.
In item B, the superintendent recommends following parent representatives as Board of Directors, to serve on the Board of Directors for the Newton College and Career Academy. Representing Al Covey High School, Ted Cummings; representing Eastside High School, Mike McCrory; and representing Newton High School, Wendy Lowe. The Newton College and Career Academy Charter School received approval by the State Board of Education on March 11, 2010. The charter outlines the requirements of a governing body. The governing body shall be the Board of Directors, subject to control and management of the Newton County Board of Education, operating as a subordinate body of the NCBOE in partnership with local business and industry. The Board of Directors, as recommended here, would assume responsibility on August 1, 2018. And that is item B.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve item B, please?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Coggins. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Johnson. Any discussions or concerns?
I do have one question, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Bailey, go ahead.
Okay, my question. My question is, you are going to get my name right. My question is, actually, Dr. Barr, how long do the parents, do the parents serve until their child graduates, or do they have a certain year, amount of years? With Mr. Walker.
They serve as the rotation of their years. Mr. McCrory is a returning one, the other two are brand new. They will serve for two years because their students are juniors, and so they'll roll off in two years.
Okay. Thank you.
So as long as they have the career gap, they stay.
Okay.
Any other questions or discussion? Having none, all in favor, aye? All opposed? Same. Motion carries. Item C.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The superintendent recommends the approval of the purchase of Iowa assessments for use in elementary and middle schools. The assessments will be administered during the month of August 2018. The Board has been granting the purchase of Iowa assessments for use in grades 1 through 8 for the purposes of measuring student performance relative to criterion and norm reference standards. This purchase will allow the district to measure student growth as required by Senate Bill 364 and provide college and career readiness benchmarks. Iowa assessments serve as the universal screener and are also used for placement test purposes and gifted identification. These assessments will also provide the district with valid and reliable data to measure instructional effectiveness. The purchase amount is $156,545 and is budgeted in the FY19 budget.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve item C, please?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Coggins. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Johnson. Any questions or concerns?
Have a comment, please, sir.
Yeah, Mr. Johnson?
This is for grades 1 through 8. We purchased, and I don't recall, that's why I'm asking the question, a testing function before, correct? What grade levels were that? I'm kind of confused as to which one did what.
There are different times, different norming periods, if you will, throughout the year when you administer these assessments to certain grade levels. For example, kindergarten will participate in the Iowa assessments in the spring, and of course, we're not bringing that amount forward at this time. These are the Iowa assessments for grades 1 through 8 and specifically for placement tests and gifted testing through this fall term. Does that answer the question?
Yeah, but I need some side discussion. We'll do that. Thank you.
Okay, I'll be glad to. Okay.
And this is just for the fall assessment, right?
The fall assessment, that's correct.
The spring assessment is a different.
Yes, that's correct.
Costs, okay.
Thank you. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Same. Motion carries. Item D.
The superintendent recommends that the Office of Curriculum and Instruction purchase Really Great Reading for the Early Intervention Program, which is otherwise known as EIP. EIP serves kindergarten through 5th grade students who are at risk of not reaching or maintaining academic grade level in reading and/or math. The program seeks to provide additional reading and/or math content instruction as well as instructional resources to help these students reach grade level performance in the shortest possible time. Students are served by certified teacher in one of the state-approved delivery models. Really Great Reading provides a comprehensive set of tools to help diagnose and teach students who demonstrate challenges in their foundational reading skills. The curriculum helps teach the necessary skills that lead to a student becoming a fluent reader. The diagnostic assessment identifies a student's challenges and the skills he or she needs to work on to overcome these challenges. With Really Great Reading, students receive instruction that is direct, systematic, explicit, and multisensory. The lessons are engaging and focus on letter-sound correspondences, phonemic and phonological awareness, high-frequency words, appropriate phonics knowledge, and spelling pattern. When Really Great Reading is combined with effective teaching, a student's sight word knowledge, decoding skills, spelling skills, and fluency will improve. Teachers receive a manual with hands-on letter tiles to work on phonemic awareness and decoding, as well as online resources to make the lessons engaging and interactive. Students receive a workbook that to support the instruction they receive from the teacher. Really Great Reading provides ongoing professional learning to ensure teachers are comfortable using it and are correctly using it in the classroom. The cost of this product for the 2018-19 school year is $54,815 and will be paid from the FY19 budget.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I need a motion to approve item D, please.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Ms. Baker, second by Mr. Johnson. Any questions or concerns?
I have one quick question. Is this a teacher-chosen program?
Yes, what we did was, we came across the program and then we saw it used in one of the schools. I sent Dr. Dozier back in the spring to visit one of the schools that used it, that had kind of similar demographics to ours. We, the teachers have been introduced to it, they didn't necessarily participate in the selection of it, but they've been introduced to it, and then if the item is approved, then they will receive specific professional learning on it later this week.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question on it.
Yes, sir.
This is system-wide.
It's, we will use it in all of our elementary schools. All of our elementary schools have EIP programs, and so it will be used on all of the elementary schools. Yes, sir.
Okay. Will this be only instructionally, or will this have the capability that the kid can get it, do this at home?
We, there are online resources that we will introduce to the teachers, and hopefully the teachers will then introduce it to the children that way. We try not to do so much at home online simply because we know that there is a divide and some, a lot of the children may not have access at home, but there are online resources that both the teacher and the students, you know, can use. Now, in the classroom, of course, they will be able to use it online, and we will make sure that we introduce it to them so they can do it at home if they have the devices. But the bulk of it is designed to be done in the, in the classroom.
Do we have any similar programs?
As it relates to EIP, no, sir. We, what we've done is, over the past few years, we've taken a look at what we offer in EIP, and this is a separate class. This is additional support. So this is support that the children get in addition to their regular reading and ELA instruction. So they're either pulled out, or another certified teacher goes into the classroom to, to work with them. So in the traditional classroom, yes, we have the resource, but this is something that is geared specifically for children who are experiencing academic challenges, you know, in the reading, to give them an additional layer of support.
I mean, I hate to be so repetitive, yeah. But you got your regular classroom.
Yes, sir.
Then you got intervention first. Now you got the second, I mean, the third layer of intervention now, is that correct?
Yes, now, it's funny to me, the second, what was your idea?
Well, you got the regular class.
The regular classroom, yes.
Now you say you had intervention already.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now this program will put the third layer of intervention.
Yes, sir.
Can we get, what we're going to get rid of, that's what, I think it's overloading the teachers' plate.
Well, what I'm saying is, the same teacher is not doing this. This is, again, we, to each of our EIP classes, we devote to the smaller schools two additional teachers to do EIP instruction, and the larger schools get, they get three. So this is an additional work on the regular classroom teacher. This is a form of remediation. So another teacher will do this, and that's what this particular teacher, EIP teachers, all they do all day is work with students who are experiencing academic challenges. So it's not an additional layer for the regular classroom teacher. This work is devoted to teachers who specifically teach EIP.
Thanks for that explanation.
We're giving the EIP teachers what they need.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Dr. Roundtree, I do have a question about this. So if a student, if a student is not in the EIP and they're not in one of those tiers but they're borderline for needing some sort of intervention in terms of reading.
Exactly.
Will that, will the regular teacher, classroom teacher be able to?
Well, this is a little different from RTI. I think some, those needs will be met in RTI. EIP is actually designed to be fluid. The children are not really supposed to stay in EIP, EIP, the whole year. We have, we have a rubric that, we use the state's rubric in order to qualify them based on, you know, any number of things, you know, test scores, teacher recommendation, and things of that nature. And then from there, then they receive these additional services. And then from there, then they receive these additional services for, as long as they need it. But it is our goal to staff them out as soon as they're showing some, um, uh, way that they are, showing in some way that they are now able to go back fully into the regular classroom to get, um, regular instruction. But, um, so in order to answer your question, we, um, we try to keep it fluid so that we can roll as many children through, exactly, through the year. So the program will run the entire school year. And so they run in and out depending on, you know, how they're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Uh, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same, motion carries. Thank you. Item E.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Item E, the superintendent recommends the approval of the attached agreement between the Newton County School System and Pediatric Services of America Incorporated to provide students with disabilities in accordance with their individualized education programs or IEPs for the 2018-19 school year. The district is responsible for obtaining, providing, or arranging for the provision of special education services as determined by the student's IEP. Newton County provides these services through contractual arrangements with outside agencies when the need for services for students with disabilities cannot be met through system employees. Hourly rates for contracted services are based on years of experience and level of degree obtained. PSA meets the guidelines for nursing care set forth by Medicaid and Children's Healthcare of Atlanta. NCSS is currently contracting with PSA to provide nursing services as required by students' IEPs. The contractual agreement with Pediatric Services of America is attached and will be paid for using budgeted FY19 IDEA general funds.
Thank you. Any motion to approve item E, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Coggins, second by Ms. Baker. Any discussions or concerns? Having none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same, motion carries. Item F.
Item F, the superintendent recommends the approval of the attached agreement between the Newton County School System and Prime Care Therapy to provide speech services, occupational therapy, physical therapy, vision services, and deaf, hard-of-hearing services to students with disabilities in accordance to their IEPs for the 18-19 school year. The district is responsible for obtaining, providing, or arranging for the provision of special education services as determined by the student's IEP. Newton County provides these services through contractual agreements with outside agencies when the need for services for students with disabilities cannot be met through system employees. Hourly rates for contracted services are based on years of experience and level of degree obtained. NCSS is contracting with agencies to provide services for speech-language therapy and other related services as required by students' IEPs. The contractual agreement for Prime Care Therapy for the FY19 school year is attached.
Thank you. Need a motion to approve item F, please?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Coggins. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Johnson. Any discussions or concerns?
I couldn't find addendum A for the rate.
The rates are, this contract is just for the, for us to allow, to use Prime Care Therapy for the services. The addendums actually come in once the contract is approved and the rates are very amongst the individuals as we approve to work with them. So for speech therapists, our typical rate is usually between $58 to about $65 an hour. Um, so once this contract is approved, the speech therapist that we are considering was at $62.50, I believe, per hour. But it's, we usually have a range. But every addendum, or depending on the person's degree obtained, will change the amount.
Is, is there a way we could get the rate range in the proposal? So that we're not, I mean, I almost kinda feel like we're approving a blank check. I know, I know we're not because of the range and you're gonna...
Right, right.
But without the addendum, um, in hand, it does feel kinda like the rate, I mean, it could be $70 and we don't know, is all, so.
Yeah, we can, we can definitely add that in there, the range.
Okay.
We just negotiate that depending on the person that's presenting it to us.
Sure, I understand. But just to have a, a cost not to exceed number would be helpful.
Right, okay.
Any other discussion? Having none, uh, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same, motion carries. Item G.
Item G, the superintendent recommends the approval of the attached agreement between the Newton County School System and Celia Best for Sign Language Interpreter Services to students with disabilities in accordance with their IEPs for the 18-19 school year. The school system is required to provide sign language interpretation for students whose IEPs require these services. We provide these services through contractual arrangements with both individuals and agencies. Sign language interpreters work eight-hour days. The sign language interpreter is contracted on an hourly basis with no benefits included. The contractual agreement is attached.
Can I get a motion to approve item G, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Bailey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Baker. Any questions or concerns? Having none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same, motion carries. Item H.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening.
Item H before you for consideration tonight. It's a contract for HVAC services. The superintendent recommends the contract for HVAC services be awarded to Air Conditioning, Air Conditioning Specialist Incorporated of Covington, Georgia. The effective date will be July 26, 2018, and the expiration date will be July 25, 2019. An invitation for bids was opened on July 11, 2018. Four vendors participated in the solicitation process. The vendors and their prices are presented in the table below. Upon evaluation, it was determined to be in the best interest of the school system to award the contract to Air Conditioning Specialist Incorporated as they provide the lowest overall cost. The estimated contract value is $420,000. This cost will be paid for with budgeted FY19 general funds.
Can I get a motion to approve item H, please? Motion by Mr. Bailey, second by Mr. Johnson. Any discussion?
You have one question. Is this a new vendor?
No, sir. They, they currently provide our services.
Thank you.
I have one question. Were there any other, uh, air conditioner companies that submitted into bids? Local?
Local? No, sir. The, the ones that submitted were those four, Sean, right there.
Okay. Any other discussion? Having none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same, motion carries. Item I.
Item I is use of facilities, a request for Newton High School. Superintendent recommends the approval of the use of the field at Newton High School by the East Metro Steelers Incorporated for youth football. The East Metro Steelers Incorporated has requested to use the field at Newton High School for youth football. Field will be utilized for five games and practices between August 25 and December 8, 2018. The facility fee will be $800. Select employees will be hired to be at the facility during use. The principal of Newton High School has consented to this arrangement.
Can I get a motion to approve item I?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Johnson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bailey. Any discussion? Having none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same, motion carries. Item J.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
All right, the superintendent recommends the annual renewable contracts and purchases with the following vendors be renewed for an additional contract term. Fortnet Security, this is the internet content filter software. Follett School Solutions, library and asset management software. File Wave Technology Asset Management Software. Safari Montage, digital media platform of products and Bridge Tech Solutions for network and email security software. Fornet Security, this will be Eyeball Cybersecurity, provides an educational-focused content filtering solution that provides scalable, customizable protection for all devices that access our network. The solution provides cloud applications and social media controls as well as mobile device protection. It allows for safe internet access without overblocking necessary for 21st century learning environments. The Eyeball software will be procured through its reseller, Fortnet Security. The school system will utilize a contract managed by PEPM, a national technology bidding purchasing program, to purchase the software. The total cost is $70,000. This cost will be paid for by budgeted FY19 general funds. Next component is Follett Security Solutions, uh, School Solutions, excuse me, for library and asset management software. Follett is the largest provider of library asset textbook automated management solutions in the K-12 schools. Approximately two-thirds of all Follett schools in the country use one or more Follett automated solutions. The purchase includes the software subscriptions as well as all necessary maintenance and support. Follett is a sole-source provider of Destiny and Resource Management Manager software solutions. The total cost is $29,425.69. The cost will be paid for by budgeted FY19 general funds. Next component is File Wave. File Wave software will be utilized for managing, securing, asset tracking, and configuration of iOS, Android, Mac, and Windows clients. Its layered and institutional model and configurator provides seamless integration for app and profile deployment, resetting passwords, data protection, remote wipe, inventory reporting, and more. The school system will utilize a contract managed by the National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance to purchase the software. The total cost is $63,872.25. The total cost will be paid for by budgeted FY19 general funds. Safari Montage is a comprehensive suite of products designed to fulfill the digital media distribution and visual instructional needs of the K-12 school system. The solution provides teachers and students access a thousand segmented, scalable searchable videos, searchable, and videos, still images, web links, and audio files, and other documents. It allows for administrators to manage their digital media effectively while improving teaching, learning, and achievement for students in classrooms. The selected technology includes software license renewals for the learning object repository, manage home access, wireless area network manager, as well as annual maintenance and software upgrades. As Safari contains the operating system for ViewPath, audio/video solution, it is considered a sole-source provider. The total cost is $34,460. The cost will be paid for with budgeted FY19 general funds. Finally. Bridge Tech Solutions, Barracuda Networks, is the leading provider of cloud-enabled security and data protection solutions. The solution purchased includes Sentinel, a cloud-based service for Office 365 that utilizes AI-based protection to stop spear phishing and other email attacks from reaching users' inboxes. Email Security Gateway manages and filters all inbound and outbound email traffic to protect from email-borne threats and data leaks. Allows organizations to encrypt messages leveraging the cloud to spool email if servers become unavailable. Spam firewall protects email servers from spam, virus spoofing, and spyware attacks. And the Messenger archiver captures, archives, and retrieves data while reducing email storage requirements. The Barracuda software solutions will be procured through its reseller, Bridge Tech Solutions. The school system will utilize the National Contract Cooperative Purchasing Alliance to purchase the software. The total cost is $50,509.77. The cost will be paid for by budgeted FY19 general funds.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve item J, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Bailey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Johnson. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for what you do. We've got to stop the spear phishing, for sure.
Yeah, that is a major concern that's out there.
I don't know what it means, but I'm with you that the spear phishing must stop, so. But thank you for what you do, for real.
Real quick, that's all the emails that you're getting from where it spoos other accounts or sends it to you. You put your information in, they get information, so your information on a dark web.
It's in my stock, yes.
Thank you.
I just wanna send a thought your way. Appreciate you for what you do. But I, I thought I had my budget booked and I was gonna ask you of going over this. Where would I find these in the budget?
These would be, I do not have the each-line item, but they are in there as it relates to, I know Safari Montage, File Wave.
They're listed by name?
On most of the products, they are listed by the actual item, um, for content filtering.
What, you're gonna label it? I would like to know. I just...
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Okay, uh, we had a motion and a second and discussion. All in favor, aye? All opposed, same, motion carries. Item K.
In item K, the superintendent recommends the funding analysis software utilized by the school system be purchased by USHA Software of Swanee, Georgia. USHA Software creates software programs geared specifically to Georgia K-12 schools that help school system maximize state funding. The funding analysis software provides administrator with real-time visibility into their funding and streamlines of reporting process. The FTE track component helps identify, correct, and validate unfunded students and segments. The special ed component scans numerous special education categories for data discrepancies that can lead to loss of or lesser funding than the school system is in fact eligible to receive. The software integrates with our current student information system and because it is designed specifically for Georgia schools, changes are made at the state, the changes that are made at the state level are integrated into the software as soon as they are published by the State Department of Education. USHA is a sole-source provider of the aforementioned software. The total contract value is $49,323.51 and the cost will be paid for with budgeted FY19 general funds. That is item K, Mr. Chairman, for board's consideration.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve item K?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Coggins. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bailey. Any discussion? Having none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same, motion carries. Item L.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The superintendent recommends that the 2019 Newton County Carl D. Perkins Career and Technical Education Program Improvement Local Plan be approved. Some background, in accordance with the Carl D. Perkins Career and Technical Education Act of 2006, each school system must submit an annual local plan and application for career and technical education. The law ties our CTAE federal funds to the date the local plan is approved by the local Board of Education. We have historically brought this item to the board as we are doing tonight prior to the beginning of the school year. Approval will allow us to access our federal grant for FY19 expenditures. You'll see in the budget overview section that you have the total federal Perkins grant awarded to Newton County for the 18-19 school year is $228,748, which is approximately 17% more than last year's grant. Our submitted FY19 plan is very similar from year to year. Uh, so we've provided a summary of changes to this year's plan over those you've approved in the past. There were not many changes to be made. You'll see the information and figures were updated throughout, as was appropriate. Uh, Newton County's pathway completer information was updated to include our most recent numbers. I'd like to highlight that briefly and point out that our FY18 completer totals were up more than 20% from the previous years. We expect that number to continue to grow. You also have a chart showing the performance indicators that are tied to Perkins grant funding and how we compare as a district to the state's performance. Keep in mind that these numbers are 2016-17 school year data. Uh, Perkins' performance data lags nearly two years behind our current, uh, date. And you'll see we outperformed the state average on several indicators and we're especially proud of our 98.2% CTAE concentrator graduation rate. Uh, the plan you're being asked to approve tonight will continue our efforts to provide quality career, technical, and agricultural education experiences for our students by providing us access to the federal funds allocated to Newton County. And that is item L.
Can I get a motion to approve item L, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Bailey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Baker. Any discussion?
I do have a question.
Ms. Baker?
Um, so my question is about the non-traditional. The non-traditional, is that can still consider as, like, females in non-traditional roles, like welding and stuff like that?
Females and, and males.
And males.
Males in healthcare, females in construction, things like that.
Does it include anything else outside of those gender roles?
No, ma'am.
Okay, so then how are we, and you said it's two years behind. So it's great we're getting them in it, but then that completion drops off.
Right.
So what's the plan in place to help them stay in it, to complete that pathway?
Sure. Um, so in the plan to address that specifically were some examples of things that we had planned. It, it's really about breaking out stereotypes and trying to convince folks that just because you're a girl or a boy doesn't mean you have to follow, you know, 100-year-old gender norms. So some of the, some of the things in the plan are non-traditional guest speakers in the classroom to show the young people that, hey, that person looks like me. So some of the, some of the things in the plan are non-traditional guest speakers in the classroom to show the young people that, hey, that person looks like me, and they're doing this job. Hosting in-school camps for non-traditional students, so, you know, you hear of some girls in coding camps that we do currently, but we're looking at girls in construction, males in health sciences, and those kinds of things. And also hosting competition celebrations, maybe some signing days we wrote in there to celebrate non-traditional students in non-traditional careers.
Okay.
That's all.
Very good. Thank you.
Just comment, please, sir.
Yes, sir.
Non-traditional participation and non-traditional completion. Am I correct in assuming the completion of non-tradition is the result of non-traditional participation?
Yes, sir. So the non-traditional participation is the number of non-traditional students, be it females in a, in a male-dominated area or vice versa. So what that shows is we're meeting the fact that we're getting it in there, but we did not meet where we're getting them through three years of that. And so we're trying to work specifically targeting, targeting the folks that we have in the pipeline to make sure they stay engaged and they don't get dissuaded to, to drop and change pathways or something like that.
And I see we're consistently not making the math performance.
Those are tied to the performance objectives, the, the EOC courses for high school math courses. And so we, we work hard to try to make sure that our CTA students perform on those tests. We've got some efforts in the plan also really geared at practical application of the content. So we've got some plans to have our CTA teachers and our math teachers to collaborate together to work on things that the math teachers are covering. Maybe they're doing area, for example, or Pythagorean theorem. And so our construction classes, for example, or engineering classes, for example, do some practical hands-on application of that math that sometimes doesn't click with our students until they get hands-on use. So we teach those in our regular CTA classes, but we feel like having the math teacher involved in those may connect the dots. I think a lot of times our students will sit down at a test and they know they're taking the geometry section, for example, and they only think about what they learned in third-period geometry class. And so we're trying to be more deliberate about making sure they understand that that thing you did in fourth-period construction is also geometry. So pairing those teachers together to get common language and make sure that our students understand the link between CTA and the test when they sit to take it.
Very appreciative of that.
That's good.
Okay, we had a motion and a second and some discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Same. Motion carries. Item M.
Item M, the superintendent recommends the STEM professional development training needed for the school system be purchased from Cultivate Twenty-One LLC of Lake Park, Minnesota. Cultivate Twenty-One is a leading twenty-first century learning and STEM STEAM, which is science, technology, engineering, art, and math education and training company. They provide high-quality professional development in STEM and STEAM, standards-based, project-based learning, and twenty-first century skills. The training to be purchased includes twelve days of instruction separated into four separate sessions, all the materials, curriculum, and other deliverables, as well as access to online training tools and resources for our teachers. Based on current needs, the contract value is thirty-eight thousand, one hundred dollars, and the cost will be paid for with budgeted FY nineteen general funds.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve item M? Motion by Mr. Johnson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Coggins. Any discussion? Having none. All in favor, aye? All opposed? Same. Motion carries. Item N.
In item N, the superintendent recommends the adoption of a resolution declaring the results of bond and sales tax use election held on May twenty-two, two thousand and eighteen. As, as background is required by law, the returns of the election or bond and sales use tax are presented to the Newton Board, the Social Circle Board, and the superintendent of elections for consolidation and for the declaration of the result of the election. And you have that resolution there before you to review. And that is item N.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve item N? Motion by Ms., Mr. Bailey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Johnson. Any discussion? Having none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Same. Motion carries. Item O.
In item O, the superintendent recommends the identified items be declared surplus and disposed of per board policy. That concludes item O.
Can I get a motion to approve item O?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Coggins. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Bailey. Any discussion? Having none. All in favor, aye? All opposed? Motion carries. Item P.
Item P, the superintendent requests authorization to employ or transfer staff during the first month of school as enrollment and class-size equity within the district demands. The superintendent has historically been granted the authority to employ or transfer staff as needed prior to the August board meetings. These additions for transfers, of course, will be brought forward at the August and September, as, as August and September personnel, personnel recommendations for your approval. And that concludes item P.
Okay. Need a motion to approve item P, please?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Ms. Coggins. Second by Ms. Baker. Any discussion? Having none. All in favor, aye? All opposed? Motion carries. Item Q.
Yes, I recommend that the local board governance annual report be completed as required by the Georgia Department of Education. Yearly training requirements are set forth by the Georgia Department of Education for local school board members and superintendents. Approved training sessions by approved trainers are offered during the school year on a variety of topics and also at the Georgia School Board Association Winter Conference and the Summer Conference as well. Required fees may be associated with the trainings. A record of completed training has to be recorded with the Georgia Department of Education at the end of the school year. And so I'm happy to report our school board members have all completed their required training, which is nine hours for all members to participate in, in courses that equate to nine hours, nine credit hours worth of new additional learning. So our board really takes that work very seriously, and they participate in a multitude of sessions and really proud that we continue that tradition of doing what's expected of us as, as a school board.
Thank you. I need a motion to accept item Q as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Bailey. Second by Ms. Baker. Any discussion? Having none. All in favor, aye? All opposed? Same. Motion carries. Item R.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The superintendent recommends approval of the personnel items as outlined in executive session.
I need a motion to accept the recommendations in executive session, which is item R.
So moved.
Motion, motion by Mr. Bailey. Second by Ms. Baker. Any discussion? Having none. All in favor, aye? All opposed? Same. Motion carries. Item S.
Um, I'd like to make a motion that we extend the superintendent's contract to June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-one.
Okay, have a motion on the floor to accept the extension of superintendent's contract by one year. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Baker. Any discussions? Having none. All in favor, aye? All opposed? Same. Motion carries. Other matters of interest? Mr. Bailey?
It's time for school.
Ms. Baker?
I have one. Yes, I do. So I'm super excited. I don't know if you guys noticed, but of course, since I've been talking about it for years, that are simply, did you guys notice that? That the strategic items are actually attached to our agenda. So when we do evaluations and everything, it will make it so much easier. So I'm super excited about that, that it's tied in together so that we can make sure we're truly doing the work. So good.
Working on it. We're getting, we're, we're learning and growing.
I'm gonna have another discussion.
Yes, we're, we're, we still have work to do with the, with the connection to the strategic plan, especially our new strategic plan. And there'll, there'll be some other additions as we move forward. But I know if you click on the goal scorecard, you could clearly see which items our board agendas attach to. So I'm really excited about it because it really does help us keep a very close, watchful eye on what we say we're going to do and, and how our items connect to what we say we're gonna do. So, yep, I'm excited about it as well.
Thank you. Ms. Coggins?
Just glad everybody welcomed them all back to school, the teachers today, and kids next Wednesday.
School is starting in August, by the way.
Yes, yes.
School starts in August.
Yes.
I'm just saying.
One, one big toe in it.
Mr. Johnson? Just looking forward to a safe and productive year.
Thank you. I echo the, what other board members have said and all the veteran teachers and administrators. You are gonna continue doing the good job that you've done in the past, and you're gonna be big supporters of the new teachers that we have been coming in, and we're looking forward for another great year. Is there, you have anything else you'd like to say?
Just a, just a couple of things. One, you know, I always say this about the team that we have, but as we've returned to school in terms of the school leadership coming back to work, Dr. Warfield and her, her support and team, they put together a really amazing leadership retreat. Was, was fantastic and very well organized. And then if you didn't have a chance to participate in the technology conference, what a, what a powerful moment both of these events have created. I mean, I think that we started the technology conference was completely unexpected. Singing and dancing and a ringmaster and the greatest show on earth. It was really fantastic. The, our new teacher induction program and the team that's been focused on pulling that all together, I mean, people, I don't think, really understand the, the tremendous work that, that our, that our team does and that they're very, they're experts in the areas that they're working on. So I'm really proud of them. You're, you're right, we start August the first and open houses. So just a reminder that our first open house is July the twenty-sixth, our high schools. The College and Career Academy open house is four-thirty to six-thirty, and then the high schools begin at five. The twenty-seventh is our middle school open house, and again, the time is five to seven. And elementary school open house is Monday, July the thirtieth, from five to seven as well. So I'm looking forward to smooth open houses with, with some, maybe some new twists from our leaders. I'm really excited about some of the things that they're planning to do differently with open house than perhaps we've done before. The synergy around our school system right now, synergy and energy is really positive and really powerful. So I'm really, really excited about eighteen-nineteen. It's gonna be a great year. Opening session is tomorrow, tomorrow morning, so we'll all be there at eight, eight forty-five AM in the morning to bring our whole school system together, to hear from powerful speakers and to set the vision and tone for the, for the school year. So another great event. It's gonna be great tomorrow.
Great. I need a motion to adjourn, please.
Thank you.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Johnson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bailey. All in favor, aye? All opposed? Same. Wish to adjourn.
Thank you very much.